I'd like to call the meeting to a low at 7:05. For Chair's report, I just want to thank the hundreds of people who braved the bitter cold last night to come and support our school and remind everybody that we're not done. There's another voting opportunity on Saturday, and I hope that everybody takes the opportunity to make their voice heard. And also, I have to let everybody know we are being recorded and will be broadcasted later. We don't have any minutes?
We did not get those completed. I know January 3 was officially Mrs. Landy's last day. However, she was in this afternoon helping me out with things. Mrs. Curley has been out ill, and God bless her. Mrs. Landy came in to help process things. But we haven't gotten the minutes taken for all of those will be closed out. If I can just let you know that we have put the postings out for this and we are getting applicants. And so we can talk about that later in terms of the recording secretary and how they're going to the position.
Okay.
Didn't realize I wasn't the superintendent here.
Yeah, we'll be in a second.
I know.
There are warrants on the table? Any line item transferred?
No.
Okay. Now it's your report.
Okay, yes. So continuing, we have posted the position. I did separate out the recording secretary's position. This is actually something that we talked about a couple of years ago, but ended up not doing so. The secretary to the superintendent is posted in a 35-hour-per-week job. And then we have posted another position for a five-to-10-hour-per-week of recording secretary for the school committee. Because we are finding that there may be some benefits. I talked to Carrie Spidey about how that worked for them to really separate out those two jobs. If you've noticed that they made some changes up at Town Hall. And she said that that has been beneficial for their organization. And so we thought, given Mrs. Landy is transitioning to this new job, that this would be a relative time trip to see what we think about this separating of these two positions as well. So with regard to that, I did want to ask the committee what your pleasure was around the hiring of that individual. Certainly, Mrs. Landy and I, or Mrs. Curley and I, can do the interviewing around that and bring you a slate of two to three finalists, if that's what you'd like to do. Depending on how well the committee wants to be in that, or the representative committee who's set on that interview team as well. We haven't done it this way before, so I think that's something you can think about and then decide how you might want to pursue. But those are some options, as I see it right now. I also wanted to let you know that Laura Rudy, who was a special education teacher at Linnberg High School, she's a 30-year veteran of teaching. She's been in Linnberg about the last 10 years now. But she retired right before the holiday break there. And we have replaced her with Kimberly Jones. And she comes to us as an experienced special educator who's worked with students with severe disabilities and has done the adult transition piece with them, which is what Mrs. Rudy was focused on at the high school. And so Ms. Jones is a resident of Linnberg. She actually was a Linnberg High School graduate who, as a high school student, volunteered time. It was before Best Buddies was actually formally organized. And she had worked with Mrs. Rudy, who was then teaching in a class program that was based at Linnberg High School. So while it's a big world, and it's a very small world as well. So we welcome Ms. Jones to the faculty there at the high school and are very pleased to have the opportunity to get such a highly qualified applicant midyear with that experience and such good quality. The candidate pool, we had purposely looked at it, given the midyear graduations as well. I wanted to let you know that there's several exciting things. I know Tiger is going to be at the primary school in the next couple of weeks?
Yes, in the next couple of weeks. I think it's the 25th, I don't know. Well, I believe it's 21st.
And also, Tiger's been rescheduled to be at Turkey Hill Middle School. They will be there. I have this information. February 7 is when they were able to reschedule. We know that they were scheduled for the 19th of December to come in and work with the 4th and 5th and 6th and 7th grades there at the Turkey Hill Middle School. But one of their past members was ill, so it will be scheduled until February. We wanted to let you know at Turkey Hill, the Great Books, you know, across the district, we have done Great Books training. And the middle school has had a great implementation model going. And they will have some more training scheduled for the blended workshop that begins. That will be February 11. And then the consultant that we've worked with for many years now from Great Books, Fred King, will be doing coaching with the teachers there at Turkey Hill Middle School on February 12. So in addition to the professional development that's going on, then the consultant stays and does in-class coaching with the teachers afterwards, which is a really nice embedded model to strengthen that. And tomorrow, with the money that the Turkey Hill Middle School was able to receive from the Miles for Miles Foundation, they are bringing in a jaw-dropping experiment and 15 competitors with the Tournament of Science. And there's a great deal of enthusiasm that has been generated around this. It really sounds like a wonderful opportunity. We have to focus in, but they're highly recommended. And that's what the folks over at Turkey Hill have decided to do with that award that they received from the Miles for Miles for having the highest participation. And I know the local cable is going to be over there filming tomorrow as well. So the people out in the community are going to be able to see what happens and some of these opportunities that they provided. But I think you all saw over the holidays that nice work that Mrs. Whipple had done, giving students the opportunity to do that hour of code and some examples of their work that we have posted on Facebook as well. So many, many exciting things going on around the district with our students. And we're glad to have them back. And everybody pretty much was ready to be back, I think, and get going on a rainy day, and then a very cold day, and another very cold day. But certainly focused and right back into the business of teaching and learning. So that is the superintendent's report. Mrs. Blaisdell is here, and we have the lottery coming up in kindergarten registration, but I'll let her talk about that later.
Okay.
Okay.
No student representative today, so the school building report?
Well, just to follow up from what you were saying, really great. It was very gratifying to see the 455 folks show up last night for the town meeting. And we were grateful for the overwhelming support that was voiced at that meeting. Of course, we still have to look forward to the ballot vote on Saturday. The polls are from 8 to 5 at right here. I'm sorry, 7 to 5 right here. And we do have another scheduled meeting next Wednesday at Town Hall. And that will be televised.
Thanks. I have to say that both you and Ms. Combs did a great job presenting the project at the town meeting. So thank you for all of the hard work you put into that. I appreciate it.
You're quite welcome. It was a work of many people and over a long period of time. And it got a lot of input and a lot of feedback. So I think it was a benefit of an open process that got us to that point. Because we've been sort of doing this presentation since last August and basically modifying it as we were receiving feedback. So, you know, having that lengthy open process, I think, was a benefit to having folks informed. And clearly, there were very, very many informed people last night.
Which is great. Okay, for our whole business, our first item is the superintendent's recommended budget.
I know I presented the budget last week, and I let you know at that point in time. But it's pretty dynamic as we go through these next few months with all kinds of influences and new knowledge and changes addressing that. So the first change that we've already had relates to having some information that was released by the D E S C. And this relates to our circuit breaker. Because a circuit breaker is based on four times the per pupil, average per pupil expenditure and the amounts above that. So the expectation is that the district, in terms of students with disabilities that receive services in excess of that, the state provides some level of support. And you know that support has varied over the years from getting down to 60% of whatever that number is that's four times over, or even as far up to around 75, 78%. So that is how the circuit breaker was designed to operate. It does not factor in any kind of transportation at all. It is really focused on the related services that are provided to students. And there are distinct formulas out there and criteria in terms of calculating how you might be able to substantiate to the state what's being spent in terms of a student's educational program and then looking at how that factors into your circuit breaker reimbursement. It is a reimbursement program as well. So it's based upon the prior year's expenditure in special education as well. But one of the things that happens on a yearly basis is that the circuit breaker, that what is that average per pupil expenditure for the state, gets updated. And we have now that foundation amount, and it will be increasing to that 41,480. And what that meant at the end of the day in terms of our calculations is that we will receive $14,230 less in circuit breaker than we had calculated on the prior level of the average per pupil expenditure for the state. And so the only change in this document that you have here is that I basically increased the amount in the private tuition line by that amount of $14,230. It was increased to accommodate for that. Because the rest of the payments for the collaborative and the private tuitions are in that circuit breaker and that revolving fund. So that's the adjustment that was made. But I felt it's helpful to keep reiterating this budget as these new dynamics continue to reveal themselves. I did share with you that the town manager also has provided to the department heads several budget spreadsheets. We are taking the spreadsheets we use and basically making sure our act information gets transferred over to the spreadsheets that the town manager uses. They only use three years of history in their budget sheets. We include about five years of history in our spreadsheets. And then there's a few more columns at the end as the town manager looks at what her recommendation is. The town manager has set some budget targets. And for us, explanations need to be provided for any things that are over those targets. And we'll go through that. The town manager, there's new forms this year, and I think they're beneficial ones in communicating. And will be basically across the town and across all departments where the town departments will be talking about what their missions are, what their goals are, and their performance standards for various functions within their budget. These are not new kinds of ways that we've addressed or formatted our budget. So it's really not creating additional work for us other than transferring it to the format that the town manager has provided for us. And then just updating their organizational chart and those kinds of things. But I know the town manager also in a communication indicated that she was available to come meet with the school committee at some point in time. She'd be wanting to do that. I know Ms. Spidey has, in past years, come in and sat down with the committee. So that's where we are with budget at this particular time.
So she must be preparing to present her recommendation to the staff around sometime around the 4:00?
It was going to be before February break. I didn't know that.
Right before break?
Yeah.
It's always useful if whoever's available can make it to that meeting here firsthand what the state of the town is and see how things are progressing.
And I think we did receive a communication in terms of some of the assumptions the town manager had put into the projections, the five-year projection model, as well as some of the things that she was thinking about relative to this budget. And I think in that communication, she said that she felt that there was information from the state that she felt she could maybe upgrade that a little bit, that there were some very positive signs coming out from the state in terms of the health of the state budget and what that meant for communities as well as schools. So of course, House One doesn't get released till the end of January, I believe, is the date.
Oh, maybe it didn't. Does anybody have any questions on the budget, any comments, any things they'd like to talk about? All right, the transportation contract?
Yes, the transportation contract, as you've been notified in the past, we kept people updated because this was a point of anxiety for everyone. I can assure you, everyone, in terms of the bankruptcy with Atlantic Express. But, you know, at the end of the day, we feel very positive about how the situation was managed by all parties. I do need to say that Atlantic Express did the work that they needed to do as they were wrapping down their business. They were available. The cameras on those buses were our cameras, so they make sure that they got their back to us so we can install them on the buses that we have in the future. And just working hard to make sure that all the information was in place. And as you have been advised by our communications, when we put out the bid, we basically structured the bid so that we could finish the, it's about 279 days is what was remaining on this two-year contract that we had with Atlantic Express. And so that was the first part of the bid. And then we put an add-on that said, you know, after those 279 days, our finished district would be interested in considering continuing. And we asked people for prices around that as well. And the bid from D bus for a 77-passenger bus was $319 per day. And currently, with Atlantic Express, we were paying $325 per day. And so for the duration of this particular contract, that represented about a $10,000 savings. Likewise, we made three-passenger buses, and we have three of those. We have six 77-passenger buses. The D rate was $339 a day. The prior rate was $348, and so that was about $7,000, a little over $7,000 savings. Now, the extracurricular rates for miles stayed exactly the same as they were with Atlantic Express. However, the wait time for any kinds of extracurricular or athletic transportation, it was $15 an hour, and now that wait time has been bumped up to $60 an hour. Because of the nature of how wait time hits us, it doesn't hit us in our regular routes, but it does hit us in other areas of the budget. The athletic transportation is primary. Extracurricular transportation is generally paid out as student activity funds. That's what a lot of the fundraisers go to support that. As well as at times for special trips, you know, students have to pay an additional amount for the transportation as well. Our music transportation for when we go to competitions for music, those are in the budget as well. And so there will be some impact, obviously, with regard to that wait time. So we can't say anything other than it's, we were able to stabilize the budget. We know that at least one other district that went out to lift kind of a $45,000 increase in what their transportation was going to be for the remainder of this year. So that was something that we were concerned about, obviously. And so seeing these numbers come in was very positive. We saw similar things with Vanpool in terms of airfare pricing. We have, as you're aware, a working relationship with Vanpool. They have many of our out-of-district transportation routes, as it is. And we saw similar kinds of prices from them. And so overall, we've had a bit of difficulty getting some of the special education vans the timing right. We've had some delays into school. But Vanpool was very responsive to our concerns. And I think today, we were where we needed to be. So after just a couple of days of, we're not talking hours later, but we don't want any students late for school because of the transportation that it got fixed. And so that's why we're happy to do business with these companies because they do a valuable, good service to the students. So that is basically the end of that story at this point in time.
So just one thing I wanted to clarify. It almost sounded to me like you said it went from $15 an hour to $60 an hour. It went from $50 to $60.
Oh, okay.
So just if anybody heard $15, they want to make it.
I must miss.
I was looking at it.
But I didn't want to see that in the paper.
Yes, yes. If D, I see.
A $10 increase.
A $10 increase would have been a better way to say it. Yes, thank you, Dr. Whipple.
And so how many bids did we have first?
For D bus, for the general transportation, we all had a sold bidder. There were other companies at the table to come watch us open the bids, but they did not put any bids on the table. For the special education transportation, we had two bids. Our quotes, because of the nature of how the special education transportation is done. So that's how that came out.
That's a great relief. I was, I'm sure we were all just wondering what sort of a hole we were going to get into. There's no hole at all.
Right, right. And I want to thank Dr. Whipple through him. He came after work on the day that we opened the bids. We had an opportunity to basically do the kind of review that we need to and do the checking. And that way, we were able to, because for this bus company, it was important for them to be able to have a secure contract and move forward with it as well. And so I think it was around 6 o'clock that evening on the 30th that everyone had signed off on that contract and started to do the work they needed to do. You know, the DESI, as well as the Attorney General's Office at the state level, were aware of the situation with the schools that were impacted and the number of students that were impacted by this. And everybody worked really hard to make sure that things were in place to ensure that transportation was there, and it was quality, safe transportation. The registry office, all of the offices around the affected communities were informed and asked to do everything they could to accommodate the bus companies that were picking up new buses or additional buses in order to make sure that the school districts and the students were able to not have an interruption as a result of that. So I thought that represented a real good team effort on the part of our state agencies, as well as the local companies and districts.
I think we have all the same bus drivers?
We do, yes.
Happy parents?
Yes, for the most part. The special education buses, of the four individuals that were associated with those, we retained two of the four. And so each one of the major routes, actually, there was at least one person on the bus that was familiar with the students and everything. You know, there have been some changes in the special education scheduling, but those have been communicated, I think, very well to the parents. And we really, except for, the only thing that I'm aware of is one phone call from a parent who just said, you know, "This is concerning, but we know it's still early and hope that it will be resolved quickly." And it was.
And then just if I might add that given the short timeframe you're dealing with, you know, the potential negative outcomes, both on life-threatening and on students' and parents' lives, I'm very, very happy that it was awesome.
I do want to express my gratitude and also commend Sandy Curley, who worked really hard to make sure we got that bid together in good form. And Mr. Longdale also was extremely helpful, working with us to get that bid tight and put out there because, you know, it's important to make sure that it's a good quality product that we put out there when we do those visits as well. And so those two parts, two individuals, really did the human's work for the institution for the students. So I just want to recognize and thank both of them as well.
Any questions on transportation? Okay, the Acceptance and Diversity Advisory Committee is scheduled to meet tomorrow night for the first time at 7 o'clock here. We do need to sort of clarify what the procedures will be for alternates. We did choose members as well as alternates for a couple of the positions. And I think it will make life easier if we can define how the alternates will be participating in the meeting. So what I would envision is that if the committee representatives are present, that the alternates are welcome to be present and participate. The alternates won't count towards a quorum or a vote. But in the case where one of the members is not available, that the alternates will count towards the quorum and be able to vote. Do we need any more clarification in that, do you think?
I don't think so. I think it was just around voting in quorum.
Those are the two important things. And so I think we should just have a motion and a vote to make that clear, how, you know, that the alternates are only counted in the quorum if they need to be. And they only get to vote if there's a need one. Sort of obvious, but it refers to be clear about those things.
So they're only needed if you need quorum? So if one member is absent here, that's not going to replace that one member. That one is just needed quorum?
No, I think what I'm envisioning is if the community representative, for example, is missing and the community represented alternate is there, even if we have a quorum, that alternate will get to?
To keep the representation.
To maximize the broadness of their participation. That would?
So in that case, we definitely want to encourage the alternates to attend as many as they can. So that if they have to come and vote, they're up to.
Right, and, you know, I would envision them having the opportunity to participate in all the discussions, regardless of whether they're voting or not.
Exactly.
Most of the time, we're not be voting. I think most of the meetings will be participatory, and everyone should be participating.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that for the purposes of quorum, that the alternates will only be used if their, the member within that category is absent. And we'll vote again only when that member in that category is absent.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
All those are there?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you. Anything else we need to talk about? So there were a couple of things we were going to end, although not quite there yet. It's that two or three items in the vision. Okay, the donations.
The donations, right.
Okay. So in your business, we have donations to talk about?
We do. I think you will recall, because it's an annual kind of donation, the ExxonMobil through the local store, which is Mike's Mobile there on Two Way, makes a $500 donation. the local store, which is Mike's Mobile, there are two ways, makes a 500 donation to the schools. And the tradition that Mike's Mobile has done is to rotate through the schools in our district. So one year, last year, the primary school received it, this year, the high school received it. It is slated, in the past, we've focused it on technology, because it comes from an alliance that goes to encourage students in the areas of science and mathematics. So that's the parameters, if you will, of the donation, which are certainly keeping within educational kinds of outcomes. And other than that, they do just ask for a notation to, for the foundation's purposes, that they want to make sure that the money has been received by an agency through a public kind of accounting of that. And so certainly this meeting being televised and reported out, suffices for that in terms of acknowledging the donation. So our recommendation to you is that we accept it as, you know, the kinds of criteria that they pose on the donations, certainly fit within our mission for the schools. And also, I wanted to let you know that the primary school sent us some information, and their box pop program has generated $2,146.20. So they have a check that was deposited. And they're debt to have for that, yes. Quite remarkable how all those box tops can add up. So, and this is one of those things that, you know, grandmothers and everybody in town can anticipate on. And at the end of the day, you're only buying stuff you would buy in the lady, because it's part of products, you know, but those box tops appear on various products. And all you have to do is clip them and get them into us, and they turn them around for cash. It's a remarkable thing.
And Mrs. Blaisdell's mother also contributes.
Yes. So I recommend acceptance of those with gratitude. And thanks to the folks that are PTO members or parents that volunteered to trim up all of those box tops as well.
Is there a motion to accept the donation with gratitude?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, with your permission, I'd like to add two items to the agenda that didn't make it onto the as-postive agenda. We'd like to talk about, we'd like to set the preschool tuition rates for FY '15, '16, and '17, and appoint a negotiating team for negotiations with the Stoli, and that, okay with me, if we have those things to agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Mrs. Blaisdell, would you like to talk?
I'd love to talk.
Tuition?
As Mr. Merkin said, the Lunenburg School Committee sets the preschool tuition each year. This rate is charged to students who are attending the preschool, who do not have an individual educational plan and are typically developing peers. The Lunenburg preschool provides both integrated and substantially separate programs for students who require special education services. But all students benefit from learning alongside their typically developing peers. So we've always provided an integrated program for children between the ages of three and four, and sometimes five, depending on where those birthdays lie. The Lunenburg preschool provided both the integrated and substantial programs for students who require special education services. And these services, again, are for age three and four. Parents of typical three-year-old students can select from a two-day program, Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday mornings. Parents of students who are four, who have four-year-old children, can choose from a two-day program or a three-day afternoon program, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday. The preschool programs are 2.5 hours each a day. Morning classes are from 8:30 to 11:00, and the afternoon classes are from 12:00 to 2:30. We are currently serving a total of 50 preschool students, 17 three-year-olds and 33 four-year-old students in our preschool program. At this time, 19 of those students are tuition-based. So we have several of our special education students that are receiving substantially separate programs, and then the others are divided between those programs that have an integrated component to them. Over the last couple of years, this number obviously fluctuates, depending on the needs of the special education students, and, you know, how many typically developing students we can bring into our program. We've, the last several years, recognized that we could expand to expand our preschool program, but at this point, with the room in the building, that's just not possible. So we haven't done that. What we've done is we've rearranged the number of classes that we're able to support the[962.12][962.15]integrated and the typically developing students, depending on the numbers that we have and the needs of the special education students. You've been provided a chart. The chart below, or the chart shows the rates that we have had in the preschool program from 2011 to current year, 2014. At this time, the daily rate is 1,825. So you can see that if a child is in a two-day program, that's 71 days, at a total cost of $1,296 for a family. If it's a three-day program, it's 103 days, for a total of $1,880 per family. That's typically paid in four installments throughout the year, so it's not an all-pay-at-once fee. The increase for 2015, I'm recommending $18.75. So that would be, for a 71-day program, $1,331.25, and for a 103-day program, $1,931.25. That represents a 2.7% increase over the 2014 school year. And then I recommended that same kind of increase for the next consecutive years, 2016 and 2017, so you can see the progression there. At this time, and in the past, we've always provided financial assistance to those children who have qualified through the lottery and whose families have demonstrated the need. We've provided that financial assistance for them. And then I provided you with some area preschool programs and their rates and charges that they provide for their families to participate in their programs. And their programs typically run a similar pattern that ours do, two- or three-day afternoon/morning programs. So that's the proposal I'm bringing forth, and entertain any questions to me.
Mrs. Bozo, you compared this to some other local preschools, and in terms of the rates, ours seem to be substantially lower.
Yes.
It looks like about 10, at least $10 lower, $10 lower than what those private facilities are. You mentioned financial assistance. That's not through the district, that's through the state, is it?
The state has a formula that they use to determine eligibility for financial assistance for any kind of daycare or early childhood experience for children. So we use that chart that's developed by the state to determine the eligibility.
Does that cost us at all?
It's a decrease in the amount of money we receive from those parents, yes. That's what it equates to. And again, you remember, this money comes back to the town to support the programs that we have.
Which is, the context of the discussion is that this is a self-supporting program, and these tuitions are what?
No, no.
That's certain.
No, it's not self-supporting.
Okay. So let's give us the context.
The context is, it's a program that the district is responsible for providing services to students with disabilities age three and up. And as part of doing that, we also create an environment where we can have a classroom where it's an inclusionary classroom, and typically developing peers can be part of classrooms for students where we're serving. So it's school-based. The tuitions are paid to the town directly, and part of the reason that we looked at this in terms of the increases that we did put in there were to stabilize, because we've seen an increase in the number of students with disabilities, and therefore a decrease in tuition paying students. And in talking with the town manager, what we're trying to do is at least stabilize that income. So it's predictable going forward, because we did see this drop at one point in time as the population was shifting. So the program is in the school budget in terms of providing for two highly qualified preschool special education teachers, plus, I believe, there's about five paraprofessionals that are associated with that program as well. And all those salaries and benefits are within the school budget. So it's a required program, it's just part of our school program. But there is not universal preschool that's provided by the state, and so the preschool portions of it for non-disabled students, you know, parents have different options there. And we become one of those options. And so it does supplement the cost of the program, certainly, and it benefits the district's program, and it benefits the students. It's a highly sought-after program. The lottery has high participation rates. And one of the reasons that we started the early learning program, and the rates are lower there, but there is a difference in the qualifications and the licensing of the different personnel that work in those programs. As I said, the preschool program at the primary school has licensed, hired, qualified preschool special educators that are good teachers in that program. So did that?
Yeah, I think I was conflating the early, the early childhood.
Yeah, the extended day.
Right. We're required to provide this education for special.
Special education.
Special education students three and up.
Yes, right.
Not required to provide it for anybody else.
Right, because there isn't universal preschool in the state. It's something the governor has certainly put on the table and advocated for.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if you see the progression, I mean, kindergarten is now a full day, and we're, you know, we're.
We're working back.
I have to say, Lunenburg remains ahead of the curve on that.
Absolutely.
I have friends who live in far wealthier communities who have to pay for their students to receive full-day kindergarten, to the tune of $4,500 a year per kid. So Lunenburg is, we're fairly progressive on this front, but we have not yet been able to offer free all-day preschool.
And based on the lottery participations each year, you know, again, we could provide, if we were able to support that budgetarily, at some point soon, hopefully, getting another special education teacher and expanding out and having another, more opportunities for integrating the preschool program, having more students, typically developing students attend our preschool. But at this point, it hasn't been feasible or viable or adequate.
Could you get to a cost point where we could handle more students?
We've looked at that, and, no, at some, the threshold for that is going to be a growing population in special education that would prompt a requirement for the third teacher, I think. We cost ourselves out of affordability if we try to do that in another fashion. So it really will be basically driven, if you will, either by the state doing more with the universal preschool options and providing some revenues that are available to schools to do that, or if our population of students with disabilities continues to grow, which would prompt us to add another one. And so we, you know, we'll try to balance that as much as possible. But we did do the factoring around that to see if there was a business model around that that we might be able to do, and that's why we ended up with the early learning program.
It's a limited number of students.
It is, in a preschool classroom.
And the reason for the limiting of the number of students is we also have to maintain a balance of our students with special education needs and our typically developing students. We can't go over a certain threshold of, you know, one population versus the other. They have to be basically, you know, 50/50, I'm saying. And we have to maintain that balance. So, you know, as our special education population grows, we need to make sure we're having typical students available as well as going to the program. Each year, we look at that very carefully as to what the numbers are. We get information from early intervention services as to which students are coming forward in the districts from birth to three.
So you do have some idea, you know, before they register, when the kids are coming up on three, what idea?
We have some idea, yes.
Early intervention, whatever.
Yeah.
Coming home and so.
And they're a child, maybe they're diagnosed at three.
Right. The other information that I did want to share with you, and if you have any other questions, I'll answer them as well. We have set the FY '15 preschool lottery registration, as well as the FY '15 kindergarten registration. That's posted on our red website, as well as posted in articles for the ledger this week. Parents who wish to register their child for entrance into the Lunenburg Public School preschool lottery for the 2014-15 school year will be held, that will be held at the primary school the week of February 10th through February 14th, from 10:00 to 2:00 each day. You can come in and register your child, register for the preschool lottery. Your child must be three or four years old, and on or before August 31st, their birthday must fall. It's tuition-based. The lottery drawing will be held on February 21st at the primary school at 1:30 PM. Parents do not need to be present for that drawing, and all parents are notified of the outcome of the lottery within five school days after the lottery is held. Every child is put into the lottery slots, and those children made that don't make the lottery for that particular year are at least numbered, so that then we call them in the order of which they came in the press and in the lottery. Okay? Kindergarten registration will be held at the Lunenburg Primary School the week of February 24th through February 28th, from 10:00 to 2:00. Children who are five years old by August 31st are eligible to attend kindergarten in Lunenburg. To register, you will need to bring a photo ID of the parent or guardian, your child's birth certificate, legal custody forms, copy of most recent physical and immunizations, and three proofs of residency. You can check our website for information about the registration process and the forms that you'll need. And that's pretty much it.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the rate that's proposed. Any discussion about the rates? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jim. Okay, the next item is a negotiating team for negotiating with the Lunenburg Council.
We've received notice from this group that they're ready to enter into negotiations. And so in the past, Mrs. Curly and myself and Mr. Longdo have been part of that team, and we're certainly willing and capable to continue doing that work and coming back, doing that work on behalf of the committee, but we certainly can always use another network if somebody wants to help.
Well, I'm personally comfortable with how things have been going on.
Agreed?
Okay. Okay. We'll give them formal notice of that then, and start setting up those negotiation sessions with them.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Is there any public comment from anybody? Okay, reports. FinCon meets tomorrow, I will not be able to attend because of the other meetings. I saw the agenda, there's not much of interest happening at FinCon tomorrow night. School council, have they been moved?
No, not at the moment.
Our last meeting was breaking, we went to break.
Right, we had a break right after.
Right. So PTO probably hasn't met. Policy has not met, capital planning probably not.
Oh, we met yesterday.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we're done. Our prioritization, and so we've given it to the town manager, and she will incorporate that into the budget.
Okay. So then are you basically done?
We're done, yeah.
Oh, really?
Until...
You know, until it gets presented or whatever.
It's true, really.
So how did our request fare?
Well...
Well, yeah. All that technology was...
More of that got shifted.
Okay. I think... Do you mean you just need to wait and see?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, I think you'll be pleased.
Okay.
With the recommendations and what will...
Good point.
Right.
Like the wellness advisory committee, I think, hasn't met yet?
Not since last meeting.
PEXAL?
Means Friday.
Okay. Building reviews, I think, we're done, right?
We're done. I asked Mrs. Landy about that, and we both thought that there was one last meeting that group was going to do, or have they completed their wish? You have to, so we can take it off.
Yes.
Okay. And that was a misunderstanding on our part when we had this conversation.
It might be worth our while to get the report distributed to the members of the committee.
I think, well, I don't know if there's actually a report, but it probably... I think the briefing that was presented was distributed.
Okay.
I think we saw it. Maybe I misremembered.
I, they're more, in relationship to answering a question by a citizen around the building, I remember receiving something from Mr. Cole. So let me go back to that email, because it might have been a PDF of the presentation they made at town.
So there was no then formal report after that, there was just that?
It was just a presentation.
That was the report.
But the recommendations were in the presentation.
Right.
There wasn't a report.
Okay, gotcha.
I'm sure we can get a copy of the presentation.
Right.
Right.
I saw it. I will find, I'll track that down and get it out.
That's probably also worth a link to the building committee website.
It's definitely on the tablet somewhere. Acceptance and diversity meeting tomorrow, and there's no other. Any items for future discussion? Okay, so just as a heads up, at our next meeting, I'd like to talk about scheduling some workshops. We have...
Once we know what's happening.
Well, we actually have a bunch of goals we set for ourselves, and...
But weren't some of them dependent upon what happens on Saturday night, so we can...
I'm feeling confident.
I did want to let the committee know that we just put out the call for a calendar committee in the district. You know, we always work with members of our faculty and staff and the administrators to develop a calendar and then bring it to you for your review. But I would like to, you know, say if there's something specific that you'd like us to look at or consider this year, certainly happy to hear that feedback from you, just to keep the process going. And as I said, that committee is currently identifying itself, and then we'll set up some meetings. But I did want to invite the school committee that if there's anything in particular that you'd like us to look at, if we know that now, we can start working on it now and start bringing you a calendar. You saying, why did you do this? Or what did you think about this?
I have two comments relative to the calendar. One is that Lunenburg has, does not have snow days, and everybody else does, because we didn't have school on Thursday and Friday anymore. I just wanted to make sure that as a committee...
Were that for, for side of the calendar?
Exactly. It's because Bob had the Farm's Almanac out, so we...
You know, you just jinxed it. You put the devil on the wall.
It's an interesting phrase. I just remember last year, I know we went through our due process and had a calendar, we presented the calendar three times before we voted on it and whatever, but then we got a whole bunch of feedback, sort of, as the party was over on that. So I don't know if there's some way we can communicate, you know, really clearly with the parents that we're getting ready to vote on the calendar, if they want to look at it and have feedback, it's good to get the feedback before we vote on it, because we ended up kind of having to backtrack and ask for feedback.
Well, again, that was driven, as it always is, by the fact that it was a tough winter last year. So we started ending up with a fair number of snow days in February, and people started to get agitated. If it doesn't snow at all in February, nobody will talk to us about the calendar.
Yeah, I'm sure you're right.
But I hear what you're saying, and...
I know we followed our process, and it was as if we hid it, we were talking about it, I'm just wondering if we can really shout that we're talking about it.
If the committee's comfortable with that, I, at times, I wait to present to you recommendations at this table prior to releasing it for public discussion, when it's your decision to come up with. And I know that we've always had a couple meetings on this, I think we have.
We got those presented lines, open it up for public comment, and then vote at the following meeting.
Yeah.
So we can do that again, we can send out an email to everybody, letting them know that the calendar is being discussed. We can do that more aggressive push, but I'd rather we see it first.
Right, okay.
We also have greater use of the social media than we've had in the past, so that might be another place to make sure the discussion gets highlighted.
Instagram a picture.
Yep.
So are we asking for parents to get this in towards the development of the calendar?
No, I just, when we have it and we're going to vote on it, I just feel like last year, it was like, we had it, nobody came, nobody looked at it, nobody talked about it, and we said, oh, okay, we voted on it. And then I guess, yeah, we had snow days or whatever, and all of a sudden, everybody had something to say about the calendar, which was fine. We got some, you know, interesting feedback and some thoughtful feedback. But I'm just thinking, if we could get, try to encourage that feedback prior to us voting on it, it might be...
Yeah, but when it's presented to us, maybe that's the time it's presented to everybody.
Yeah, I don't think you should solicit it now, right.
No, not now, but when it's available to be given to us, I think it should be, you know, tweeted out or on Facebook or however we're going to do it at the same time.
Yeah, we'll present it here, and our practice has been that night or the next morning to post it and ask for feedback. And I think what happened this last time is that everything was fine, we voted it, and then we had a bunch of snow days, right?
Yeah, then that wizard came in and...
Well, it was also the two-week, the holiday break, you know, which I haven't looked at next year's calendar, but...
It's going to be the same.
You know, because that stirred people up, you know, some people wanted us to go back, you know, on...
And we did reconsider.
Yeah, you know, so...
We'll see what it looks like, and we'll make sure everybody knows that we're, what it looks like, and that we're going to vote on it and give opportunities for feedback.
But I do know that we have greatly increased our followers, particularly on Facebook, and that whole communication piece, I think, is much more lively than it was last year in this time, is becoming more institutionalized, if you will, reliable for people to know that things are going to be posted and those kinds of things. So, great, okay.
We don't need an executive session.
No executive session.
No, because we've been on vacation, we know that we can negotiate only the second.
Can I make a question?
Sure. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So who's doing the name? Thank you all for joining us.